This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, very good. All right, evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board from May 23rd, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Could we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get the cords here. Good, thank you, thank you. Well, so, we have part of our Select Board, I think, Dan, welcome as a new, new member of Select Board, and Stephen Johnson, I think, is maybe not going to join us tonight, from what he had said to Eddie, maybe out of town, so we'll hope to catch him up next time, I guess. So, we will get going. How about any open time for the public? Yeah, Robert?
Hi, Robert Floyd, College Highway speaking as Town Moderator. Our annual Town Meeting went well. There were 176 registered voters and 20 observers. Registration by the workers went smoothly. The counts were timely and efficient. Town Clerk Lucy Dalton's work has performed admirably. The summation of all that happened on May 9th is presented concisely and accurate in her Town Clerk's minutes for our annual Town Meeting. We all want to increase participation, and something Town Clerk and I have discussed for a couple of years now is to have us return back to taking care of children, so parents can vote. And some towns do it gratis. One town doesn't. They charge $20 per family regardless of the number of children.
Oh, really?
So, it just would increase participation, and it is something we've done, and was, I believe it was successful. It worked. There were kids there.
Oh, yeah. Didn't know that.
But, of course, we used to have picnics and elections during our annual Town Meeting, so that was, that was a whole different era. Any questions?
No, no, and thank you too for running the show that night. I think it went very well. I mean, we're done with, what, within an hour and a half or thereabouts, or something like that?
Twenty-three minutes, I think, or something, roughly.
Thirty-three articles or something? That was pretty amazing.
Yeah, that was, everybody had a chance to speak, and everybody was heard. Wearing a different hat, Cemetery Commission, the, our scouts are placing American flags on the vets' graves tonight in time for the Memorial Day festivities.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thanks. Okay, any other open time? You're actually on the agenda, if you want, oh, okay, something else, okay.
Real quick, I just, Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, but I'm a Memorial Day Parade Committee member, so I just wanted to remind the townspeople about the Memorial Day Parade, which is Monday at 9:00 AM, beginning at the Norris School. We're gonna kick things off, and we're gonna march down Palmeroy Meadow, down College Highway, and ending up at the cemetery first, and there's gonna be a little ceremony there, and then we're gonna end up here at the Town Hall. There's gonna be music, lots of big trucks. K&amp;J have said they're gonna participate, Kent Brothers so far, and we have some vehicles gonna participate, some maybe antique, not sure yet, some maybe sports cars, I'm not sure, but everybody's calling kind of at the last minute, but we do have marchers, so we have Girl Scouts coming, they're gonna march, and I know the Select Board said that they're gonna participate, and the COA, so hopefully people will be able to attend. It's not gonna take up too much of the day for festivities, so you can still have your picnics and parties afterwards, so we hope that everybody can try to join in. And also, the Legion wanted me to remind everybody about Southampton Citizen of the Year applications are available to nominate the Citizen of the Year for 2023. They are due back by July 14th of this year, so, and that award will be given out at Celebrate Southampton in August. All right, and then I'll give my report about elections
Sounds good, thank you.
In a little bit. Thank you.
All right, I may as well just add one more from my own part. Tomorrow night, everyone at Norris School, we've got the Community Conversation happening at 6:30 PM, and it's entitled Water Roads and Public Safety, so we have a facilitator coming in to facilitate a discussion. Town officials will be there, as well as anyone who would like to attend, and we're gonna hopefully learn a little bit more altogether about what we do have for services, how they work, and some of the challenges our town departments face, and look at some ideas of how we can maybe move forward in the future to do some further planning and maybe mitigate some circumstances that we, you know, hopefully don't have to endure yet again. So, that's tomorrow night, so I'm just putting a word out for everybody to come, please do, at 6:30 at Norris School. Okay, that will be, by the way, televised, but, sorry, it won't be live, right? It's recorded.
It's recorded.
It's gonna be recorded, so it won't be live, but it will be recorded, and probably by the next day, East Hampton Media usually has it up on, on the YouTube, as well as on our, on our 191. Okay? All right, so with that, if no more open time, I think our first order of business, since we are a newly constituted elected board, is to have a, an election of officers. So, we have actually five positions on the Select Board, and I will open it up to take nominations for the Chair.
I nominate Chris Fowles.
Second.
That was good.
I move we close nominations for Chair.
Second.
Okay, all righty. Any discussion on that? No. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll vote aye too. Okay, I will, I will succumb for another year. Thank you. I was gonna get that one over there, but anyway, okay. Nominations for Vice Chair, please.
I nominate John Lumbras as Vice Chair.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, John, I'm hoping you will accept that. Could we have a vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Nominations for Clerk, and this is Clerk basically mostly toward the executive session minutes, because we do have an outside person that does our note-taking from our recordings, and so there's someone else who's not on-site that basically listens to our many hours of meetings and puts our, puts our notes together for our regular meetings, so this is basically for the executive.
And Chair, before you open up nominations, maybe we could just inquire of the two, since there's five positions and five members?
Yep.
Do either one of them have a strong feeling for one or the other, and then Mr. Stephen will get what's left.
Very good, yeah. Well, I would just say one thing, too. I wasn't counting on that. I think the, the challenge on signing warrants is a challenge.
Would you like me to?
Yeah, why don't you do that, because I think that's a challenge.
The warrant signing for the primary and the alternate, the individual has to be readily available, and at least be able to come down the day of, not the day after, and sometimes we do have emergencies where it might be a couple of hours, so I, I would say that it's ideal for someone that is close to Town Hall, maybe retired, or at least works in town and could take a break and get here at a fairly quickly, quick, quick time.
So, I could take the Clerk job?
Okay. You'd be interested in the Clerk position?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
All right, so, we'll nominate Dan as Clerk. They have a second, then?
I'll second.
All right.
I'm handing that over.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, then, Select Board Member to sign warrants.
I nominate Mr. Johnson.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Alternate Select Board to sign warrants.
I'll take that.
Joy? All right, Joy, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. We're in business.
Not even 10 minutes in, we're good.
How about that? All right, all right. Public hearings, none tonight, and presentations, so first up, Lucy, Town Clerk.
Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk. So, just wanted to thank the voters who came out to vote last Tuesday. I'm not gonna take up much time, because I wanna go home. The election was a very low turnout, 14%. We have 4,678 registered voters. Our population is 5,999. Precinct 1 has 2,336 voters, and Precinct 2 has 2,342 voters. I wanted to touch base on notification, because I've been hearing that people did not know that there was an election going on. We put a sign out front. I don't know how we can let people know more that there was an election. I mean, I'm sure that people knew word of mouth that there was an election going on. It was in the paper. It was on the website. We put it in the census.
On social media?
Social media. We put the vote-by-mail applications into the census insert. People, you know, who are listening, it is held the 3rd Tuesday of May every year, so mark that on your calendars. We had the sign out front. It's on the bulletin board. We're gonna try and come up with ways to do more notifying. It does cost money to have more signs and, you know, get the word out, so, I mean, that comes down to the budget, and the budget for election registration expenses was $15,000, and it was brought down to 11.5 or 11.7, so just something to think about, because next year, you know, we're gonna have the spring primary in March, and the local in May, so, and then we're gonna have the November election, which is fiscal year '25, so but just to let anybody know that, and I'm gonna tell people right now, if you're watching, some important dates to remember are March 5th, 2024, is the presidential primary. We're gonna put these in the insert for 2024 census, but May 21st, 2024, is the annual local election, and November 5th is the 2024 presidential election. And so, that's gonna be some big voting going on, so that leads me into my next subject about mail-in voting. It was offered for this election. We thought it would be a good alternative for voters to get their vote in. We didn't offer early in-person voting, because when we had it in September and November, we did not have a good turnout. We had someone here on two consecutive Saturdays, and we probably had 10 people on both Saturdays, and we had it during regular business hours, and we did not have a good turnout, so we didn't offer it for this local election. We will be offering it for the primary and the presidential, and the local, just because people said that they didn't know it was happening, so we'll offer it, but that costs money too, because we have to pay people to be here. The early, the mail-in voting costs 84 cents to mail a ballot out. We mailed out 820 ballots. We got less than half of them back. So, I'm not sure why people didn't want, did they not want to send them back? I'm not sure, but you know, that's, that's budget. That's more money that we have to think about, so.
Is it because people just check a box and say they just want all ballots for all elections, and then, and they don't pay attention to the fact?
So, the state form that the state created has had on it all elections or local election only, and it, and we had to put our date of our local election in. Since there's no other elections this year, you know, people voted, I mean, checked off whether they wanted all elections or the local, and we input that in the system, so it, it wouldn't matter, because we have to separate them anyways, but just something to think about, that, you know, it's gonna cost money to mail out those ballots, so if, if you want to, to get a mail-in ballot, just remember that you have to get them back.
So, on that point, 820 ballots were mailed out, roughly half, 410, give or take, came back?
Less than that.
So, less than 410, but some number south of that.
Yep.
How many total ballots were cast?
642, 62?
So, maybe 240, 240 people actually came to Town Hall? Because you had 400 and something in ballots, right?
Yes, so not, yeah.
Right, and I know that, I think it's Agwam, took a vote to not allow mail-in ballots anymore, because of the expenses associated with it.
Right.
So, who, who, who cast that vote? Who makes that decision whether or not to have mail-in ballots? Is it the Select Board? Is it the Register of Voters? Who has the authority to make that determination?
Well, we, we, we could have came to you and asked you, but we
Could you just clarify "we"?
Of the Board of Registitors.
What are the Registitors? Thank you, yep.
But we wanted to give the option to the voters to do the mail-in voting for the local election, because we had done, not done it before, so
And is that something that has to be redone every year?
Yes, every single year.
That vote that we took for this election does not automatically include for next year?
No, every single year. It's, every year, it's the same thing with absentee voting, and it's the state, and the state will send out the postcards next year, and on it, it will say, local election, state primary, and general election in November. It will have all of those three on there, and
But in years when there's a state election or a federal election, there's additional revenue that comes into the Town Clerk's office.
Yes, yes, I mean
This year, we don't have it, because it was only a city or a town.
Right, so we will get reimbursed, but it also costs money to mail, to order the ballots. You know, I ordered 2,000 ballots, that, you know, unused ballots can be destroyed after 30 days, used ballots after two years, but we won't destroy them. We will use them to make up cards for the Town Meeting, for people to hold up. We will reuse them, but, you know, it's still wasting away my budget.
No, I mean, you had, the polls were open for eight hours, so
Right, and, you know, we did send some people, workers, home, but
I also, I also think the low turnout potentially was, the only contested race was Park Commissioner, and then there was an override question that, if you weren't paying attention at Town Meeting, that's when you found out the override question was coming in, less than a week before.
Well, it was in the paper. I mean, there was some
I personally don't buy the paper, and I, and I don't think many people in my generation do, except for the electronic version that shows up in my inbox by somebody in this room.
Okay.
That's usually a couple of days afterwards.
Right, and so, that question was not my, my, you know, my problem to get out, or my issue to get out, that was the Select Board's to get out, so
But I think it leads to a bigger discussion, the lack of citizen participation in either standing for office, but how many, how many blinks were there on the ballot? You know, where, I mean, I don't mean blinks cast, I mean, there was nobody to stand for the office.
Right, right. So, I mean, we did elect a, a new moderator, we have two new Select Board members, we have a new, I mean, the Treasurer got re-elected, we have, you know, an Almaner, we do have a full Assessor Board, so, all three of them. The Board of Health got re-elected, her seat. Cemetery Commission, Community Preservation, has two members. Finance Committee is still short, so, you know, people need, you know, if anybody's interested in being on Finance
We just have two, or?
No, because Vicky did resign after the, the meeting, so it was too close to the election, too.
But was it just, just Donna got elected then?
Donna was, yeah, yep. And then we have Housing Authority, a new member.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, there were no write-in candidates for Finance Committee? Rumor on the street is there was one write-in, but there was none?
One write-in?
For Finance?
Yes, there was, and I called him, and he has not answered. He did not, he did not answer.
And when does that window close? Has it already closed?
It was 72 hours, so, yeah. Then, School Committee, there was three for Norris, they have all, and most of the people have been sworn in. All the School Committee members for Norris, I haven't heard back from Hampshire Regional, Library Trustees, the Park Commission, Personnel Board, they all have, they do have a full board, and there was some question about one of the members being elected official, and checking with ethics. They did check with eth, they did check with ethics, they told me, so, that's on them. I have nothing to do with that. They have to call ethics on their own.
Yeah, but aren't you a custodian of any, if they are going, if someone is going to disclose their ethics finding, aren't you the custodian?
And I did tell her that
So, do you, do you have anything on file today, as the custodian?
No.
Thank you.
No. Well, I did tell her about this disclosure, I did. So, just to let you, to put that out there, I did tell her about the disclosure. And Trade Warden was re, re-elected, and the Water Commissioner will be coming in tomorrow to be sworn in, so so all in all, it was, it was, it went smooth. I mean, the, some of the election workers were a little bored at some times, but and I just wanted to thank the Police Department. We did have a police officer here. I know that there was a question, that there was not a police officer here. Officer Mailer was here. He worked a double shift. He was here opening the polls at noon. He was here until 10:30 PM to secure the ballots in the secured box. He was checking doors, doing walkthroughs to make sure we were safe. Thank you, Officer Matt Mailer, for that, and Chief. And I just wanted to thank the election workers for sitting all the hours, and the COA for letting us use their senior center, and the Assistant Town Clerk for helping set up, so.
Good point. Well, thank you. So, in spite of the, the low turnout, it sounds like we've got positions filled for multiple things.
Yeah, and, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, there are positions that are out there on other committees that need to be appointed, so
Yeah, but, and there, and there's time to do some appointments if we have to.
Yeah, and I'll be updating the final minutes, and then I need to update Department of Revenue and Secretary of State Elections Office and my Town Government website, so, just to let you know. And if anyone has any questions, please just email me or call me, just
I had a, I had a comment to share with you. I know that one form of communication that I do always pay attention to is when I receive the phone call, a phone call from Ed, Mr. Gibson.
Yep.
I don't know if that costs money to use that service, or
Code Red?
Yeah.
Is that code Red?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, like, I wish we would have thought, we could have thought of that, you know, I mean, Ed said, Ed had mentioned using the electronic, I mean, the signs, but then he said that they were used, being used by the airshow, so we couldn't use them. So, I mean, we are going to take care of that stuff for next year, and we're gonna get the word out. So, I apologize for anyone who was not aware of the election, but you know, we try, so
Sharing your thoughts.
Yeah, you know, and it, and it wasn't, you know, we tried, so, all right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to everybody that worked that day. It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, all right. Next up, we have Hampshire Regional. Kim Schott, please. Our School Committee Chair, I believe.
Yes, hi, I'm Kim Schott. I am the Chair of the Hampshire Regional School Committee. First, thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight. We, we appreciate it. As I mentioned in my email, we wanted to come and talk with you tonight about some of the concerns that came up at Town Meeting regarding Hampshire's budget. We've put together some information about our use of excess and deficiency funds and school choice funds, and we want to just talk with you about that tonight. Our Business Administrator, Mickey Buhl, is here, and he's the one who compiled the information for us, so Mickey's gonna take over, and here we go.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, and Kenneth, I think it might help for them to have, you know, the words. So, thank you much. It's good to, to meet everybody. I met John once before. So, what I'm hoping is that this is the start of understanding where the concerns are in more detail. I'm brand-new to the district, but was able to look through everything enough to be pretty clear about three points that I just want to make. So, what I'll, what I'll give an overview of is, one, to try to clarify what I think is a misunderstanding of the E&amp;D Fund. Two, I want to just highlight what's driving the current budget for next year for the school, for the high schools. Costs that are what we call non-discretionary costs, that are really outside of the, the School Committee's control. And then put into perspective some of the recent use of the reserve fund, both the E&amp;D Fund and the School Choice Fund are the two main reserve funds that a regional district has. So, so I'll just talk through these three main points. So, the E&amp;D Fund, first of all, I'm not, I really would like to sit down and understand where the concerns lie about the E&amp;D Fund, because I only, being so new, I've only had, you know, some brief conversations, but I know that at the Town Meeting, the number of $6 million was spoken. I'm not sure where that comes from, but if, if it's, if anybody thinks that there's a $6 million fund out there, that is incorrect.
No, that number is cumulative. If you add up to 10 years, it's a cumulative.
So, I'm not sure what the relevance of that is.
It's a data point.
And so, the, the E&amp;D Fund is capped, as you know, at 5% of the budget, so it's never been above 704, I think, or maybe 708,000. And, and in fact, this year, after returning the 600-plus thousand to the towns, and committing a 367,000 to next year's budget, which I'll talk about later, like, was an explicit strategy to reduce the impact on Town Assessments, after those two, committing that money, the E&amp;D Fund's the lowest it's been in over a decade. And this is an area that I haven't been able to go into in enough detail, but that initial starting point of the E&amp;D Fund was artificially high. It was because the, the position that I'm in now wasn't filled, and there was a backlog, and so it actually, probably the effective balance is gonna be considerably lower than that. So, the low point over the past decade was $339,000, and effectively, after giving back the 617,000 and committing 367,000, the fund is below 336,000, or 300, I think it might be right at 336,000, and that's not accounting for the fact that that starting point was actually artificially high, because a bunch of things hadn't been applied to it yet. So, we're, we're down into by far the lowest it's been in over a decade. So, the idea that there's a big E&amp;D Fund there is just not correct.
Just one question.
Yeah, please.
Just to be clear, the 617 that was returned is because it was, the E&amp;D Fund was over the 5%, right?
That's correct.
Anything over 5% gets returned to the towns, is that right?
It doesn't have to be returned to the towns. That was a choice that the School Committee made. The, the, there are both laws and regulations related to the E&amp;D Fund, and so the first step is apply, anything over 5% has to be applied to the budget. So, what the School Committee could have done is apply that 617,000 that was over to next year's budget, which would have reduced the need for other funding sources to, to make that budget work, so it would have been one strategy. But because of several factors, and I, I got to attend the, the School Committee meeting where they decided that, they decided that the best action was to return those funds to, directly to the towns, yeah. So, it doesn't have to by law. That was a choice that the School Committee made.
Okay.
Right? And I think that one of the things I heard at that meeting was that the, that the Southampton, the Town, had already built in the portion that was coming to Southampton into the budget, so that would have created quite a problem if the School Committee had chosen to apply that 617 to the school budgets. That would have sounded like it would have created quite a problem here in Southampton. And, you know, nobody wants to create that kind of late-in-the-game discord of budget process.
And I think you're hitting the nail on the head, and a lot of this came up before you got here.
Yeah.
And I think you'll find, the longer you're here, you're gonna find there's 20 to 30 years of mistrust going on right now. That is all bubbling up to the top, and I think over the past two years, collectively, the, the governing bodies have made tremendous strides at improving that. And the overall budget this year was the most transparent it's been under Superintendent Montaville. Superintendent Osborne didn't do it, Superintendent Sullivan didn't do it, Superintendent Jenkins didn't do it. Nobody could ever see the central office budget. It never existed.
Really?
Right, so now it's there, and we're fairly appropriating everything. You just saw your little pieces.
Yeah.
You know, we can, we can go on about the District Treasurer, but that's another argument for another day, but the, I think the, the concern, at least coming from Southampton's point of view, is every year, there's this, we, you call it E&amp;D, it's our version of free cash, on the municipal side, right?
Right, it is.
So, that means that you planned on spending money, and for whatever reason, cumulative lines were either underspent, or revenues came in greater. An example would be circuit breaker always trails a year behind. So, maybe you thought you were gonna get 200,000, but you ended up with 400,000 in circuit breaker, there's more revenue coming in, and that kind of all falls out to the E&amp;D, just as a minor example. The, the question is, and again, prior to you, we have been, South, the residents of Southampton have had our heads beaten open on the fact that we don't spend enough money on our per pupil allocation at Norris. And that comes up at every School Committee meeting, in all the other towns. If you guys only spent your fair share
At the Southampton School Committees or the Regional?
The local Southampton.
Okay.
So, if you look at the local Southampton, and you do it, and I know they changed the formula now, we have to go back and do it now, we have to go back and do it, but we were, we were underspending based on, and Superintendent Sullivan did these numbers, let's say, less than $1,000 a kid, we had to make a difference. But when you looked up to Hampshire Regional.
Yeah.
Where every dollar spent at Hampshire Regional, 56 cents comes out of the citizens of Southampton.
Right.
And we were overspending by a million dollars collectively, divide that by the number of kids.
What do you mean, overspending by a million dollars?
If net, I'm going to make up a number. If net school spending was 15,000 per child, we were spending 17,000 per child.
Okay.
Collectively, so there's an overspend of 2,000 above the minimum, but at the local level, we're underspending. Who's the biggest feeder in the Hampshire Regional? It's Southampton. So if we're, in theory, this is what the other schools are saying, you're underspending on your kids, so when your kids get to us, we have to spend so much more time and resources on them, when in reality, Hampshire Regional's budget as a whole, this, and this is like the perfect storm that came up, because I really think this year's budget is truly trimmed down to, I mean.
Yeah, I did, we'll talk about that in the second point. Yeah, you're right.
Historically, you know, all of a sudden, you know, there's money for this, there's money for that, and then we were told, let me finish my first thought.
Yeah, please.
So then, if we just reallocated the dollars we spent up at Hampshire Regional down to Norris, and it leveled it all out, the taxpayers of Hoyock, or of Southampton aren't spending any more money. We're equalizing it.
Yeah.
And, and so that's the position we come from, or at least I do in my spot here, at Chair of.
And the school.
School Committee, and I'm, and I'm on the Finance Committee.
And so you're getting pressure at the school committee level from citizens that you're underspending what you should be.
You've got to spend more on the kids, more on the kids, but we're already spending like 58, 59, 60% of our entire budget is being spent on, we have a $19 million budget, we spent $12 million in education.
Yeah.
That's before you factor in Volk and transportation there.
Yeah.
You'll find I'm the biggest opponent for regionalizing the entire system.
Okay.
And getting rid of 60% of the elected officials on the school committees, because 36 of us is way too many to have here. But the.
It's, it's a lot.
My other point, will come back to me in a minute on what I was trying to think, but.
Well, let me ask this, let me ask this part of it, though. And, and this is where I think that, like, only being able to get this much of the picture so far, I like, I know this much, but the idea that people feel like Southampton is underspending what net school spending is, I need to see the details of that. I know how it happens, but that net school spending is required net school spending, so it has to be spent by state law. So I'm curious, like, that's, and those details are very messy, but I really need to see those details. And then historically, you can't underspend, you can underspend required net school spending once, but then it gets built into the requirement for the next year. You can't underspend it year by, year after year, or else it'll actually penalize the town. So, so those are the details that I'd really like to sit down and understand the history of.
So my, my, and the end goal of everything we did the other night, because more than likely, none other community is going to vote this down, but we got you guys down here to talk, to talk to us.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm hoping that the next step will be.
And that, and that really has never happened?
The six elected individuals from the citizens of Southampton that sit on Hampshire Regional, five are elected, one's appointed from the local school committee, that those six of them will actually come to a meeting and sit with finance and sit with us, so we can walk through this entire situation, because there is going to be, hopefully, there's going to be a non-binding question on this next municipal election to regionalize the entire system. I personally want to regionalize it with Hampshire Regional, but if Hampshire Regional doesn't have anything to do with us, then let's look to East Hampton, let's look to Westfield, let's move on. But we can't keep doing this over and over where your free cash is a half a million, and we're not even talking about school choice, right? You've, you've seen an increase there of 120,000 this year.
Okay.
And net.
Yeah, that's super helpful. Well, I, so I was at one of the meetings where that regionalization conversation came up, but it was just a couple of words spoken, and, as I can't remember if you were in the more extensive conversation, but I, I love public policy, like, it's my whole gig, so I'm fascinated by that conversation, and, and the regional nature of the district is one of the reasons I'm so interested in this position. So I'd love to dive into what the idea is behind that regionalization, and the politics of it, I know, are going to be wicked complicated, of course, but the policy side of it, I'd really be interested in, and the budget impacts, I'd be interested in, yeah. Now, I think that the E and D fund, I'll, so, it was a mistake that resulted in it being certified, which is every year gets certified, and, you know, I, I think the free cash for the town gets certified in a similar way. It got certified 1.3 million. That was a, way higher than ever before. It was a mistake. We had a couple hundred thousand dollars of spending that hadn't gotten applied to it that I haven't yet sorted through, but Denise was clear, she knew where it was, and, and so we, we need to, like, get that, so it was artificially high. Then, after the money goes back, and the dis, the committee had already voted to commit a pretty high amount of that E and D to the budget, it actually is lower than ever in recent memory. And John talked about the fact that the budget is really not, the budget this year is very clear, is being driven by costs beyond the committee's control. And the 25% increase in non-discretionary cost is enormous. And there's a couple of big drivers of that. Out-of-district tuition is the big, biggest one. It was going up by something like 125%. The utility costs, so electricity and fuel, as we all know, paying our own electricity bills at home, skyrocketing. Transportation costs going up, some insurance costs going up. 25% increase in the non-discretionary side of the budget is just a staggering impact. The committee did two things to mitigate that impact on the town assessment. So first of all, it committed over $2 million of the reserve funds, combination of school choice and E and D, way higher than ever before, to mitigate that. Second, it actually cut the budget for the discretionary side of the budget, the stuff you could control, and if you compare it to, it actually cut in an absolute term, which is pretty rare, but if you compare it to what, you always expect discretionary costs to rise, we call it a level services budget, I'm sure that you've dealt with that in the town side forever, it's almost a $200,000 cut from what level services would be, and it's pretty, pretty significant. The, the third point that I think is relevant, from what I've understood so far, is this idea of the reserve funds being so big. The, the committee, over the past three years, has increased the amount coming from those two reserve funds, school choice and E and D, by 31% three years ago, 25% the next year, and 46% the following year. And that's on top of the previous year. So the increase compared to the four years ago has been enormous, like a huge increase in commitment from those reserve funds. So the reserve funds are not moving in the increasing, the reserve funds are going down. Now, what's the right level of the reserve funds? There's plenty of conversation that can be had about that, but the fact is, the reason for the reserve funds, the reason why the city, the town has free cash and that the regional districts have to have an E and D fund, is to prevent things like 25% increases in, in discretion, non-discretionary costs from having to get passed on and having this one-year spike on town assessments. So if we didn't have, if we had, if, if the district had for prior years run really lean on the reserve funds, it would have been an ugly year for all the towns, because all those, all that out-of-district tuition costs, all the electric costs, all the utility, all the fuel costs, all the transportation costs would have had to get passed on, because there's no other place for the money to come from. So, the, in a way, those two funds had worked exactly as we all would want them to, to mitigate that impact on town assessments from what hopefully are not going to be continual increases. I would not hope for those big cost drivers to continue to increase at 25%. That would really be a problem. But certainly, if there's a one-year 25% increase, like, I think the total's like $2 million, that's where that reserve fund really came in handy. So, I, I got to go to the town meeting and, but being so new, I didn't really know, I would love to sit down and talk in detail about the, the historical understanding of how the perception of Southampton, of Norris's budget compared to the regional budget. I'd really like to understand the argument about the regionalization idea and understand the policy and budget impact of, of that. But I also want to make sure, like, and, and in the little bit of time I've been here, I mean, Deanna and Lauren and Kim are already clear, like, everybody wants the budget process to be highly clear, transparent, and collaborative.
It sounds like you've made it that way.
Yeah, I mean, there's a huge commitment to that, and, and I, and I think, I mean, I think that was like part of the plan this year, but then not having this position.
Sure.
It all fell apart, but I do think that, like, we really want to start making sure that.
It has made tremendous, tremendous headway.
Good.
And, and, you know, it's, the Chair at Norris has, the, the two improvements that I would like to see next year is an FTE count-by-line. What was it? What, what are you proposing? Because that'll, especially the school committee member. You know, I, I have a finance background.
You've not seen that in the past.
But other, older school committee, I mean, we have a physician on our side, we have, we have a counselor, we have a lawyer, you know, they don't necessarily, not everybody knows what they're looking at, you can't assume everyone's finance, but you go down a line and line and I'm jumped, well, because you had three English professors and now you're, you're budgeting that line at six. Well, let's talk about the difference here.
And you've never seen that in the past.
There's no FTE counts. There is in central office. I'll, I'll take that back. But the, and the other thing I would say is that, again, traditionally, it's always been, here's the last three years of budget numbers.
Yeah.
And here's what we're proposing. Well, yeah, but I know because we vote on, we vote on cost transfers.
Yeah, right.
So where did, what, that line item, where did it really end the year? And what are you asking for this year? And is there a difference? So then we can have a conversation. And again, it's just cleaning up the transparency, but again, I think the entire budget process across the board has been improved 500%.
Well, that's really good news. I mean, because with the chaos of having the position influx and.
Yeah, and the position was vacant for a long time, too.
And be able to improve. I mean, I, I've gotten to talk with Andrea Wadsworth several times and gone over several of different things she, she did, and like, the E and D research that she did for the committee was excellent. The, you know, I, it's really good news. I mean, I, now, that being said, like, I, I've already had five conversations with people about what they'd like to see differently and how the budgets are presented, and spreadsheets can look in any number of ways.
36 elected officials, you're going to, you're going to get a lot of opinions.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We're not even talking about finance committees. But the, the other thing is, and I'm not, if, if the district has it, I'm not aware of it, so if it does exist, if it could be shared with, at least with the five chairs of the school boards and then down, but what we have on the town side that I don't see on the district side are written policies. Like, for example, our free cash comes in, X percentage goes here, here, and here, and then we have a discretionary piece that we can use.
Written policies specifically on the finance procedures?
Yeah, what, what do we do with E and D? E and D should, we, we strive, because you should strive. A lot of other districts strive to have an E and D of 2% to 3%. And, and, and all the communities vote on and say, yep, that's acceptable, that's okay to do that, because we know what your game plan is and why you want to do it.
So it's not policy, that's, I wouldn't call that policy necessarily. I mean, you could, but that's, that would be different than most policies I've ever seen school districts have. You could have a general target, but a policy would be, that would be a pretty.
What you want to do is you want to communicate.
It would actually be, I would never recommend any school district to set a policy below the state law of 5% because you end up tying your hands at times where you may want to be able to use the law.
Maybe a communication too, so that the communities know.
Yeah, I think that's the key.
And then the, and that's the other thing, like, the, the current Chair of the committee, of the district committee and the immediate past Chair, who I think is Vice Chair of the Finance Committee up there, came before us, and they had a great idea about taking some of the surplus and creating a capital stabilization account.
Right.
That's not new to us, but it is new for the district to do it, and, you know, okay, so media, you're going to take that 1.7 million dollars and shove it in there, you know? Let's talk about, let's see what, what the policy, what the format, what the general guideline is going to be. And, and it becomes more communication. The more central office can communicate beyond the school committees, to the select boards and the finance committees, I think the, the better this entire process will go.
Yeah, I think that's what you're really looking for when you, we called for this vote, right? It seems like the whole, the whole root of it was to, like, from what you're saying, it wasn't really so much for the, about the money, it was about getting you in here to.
To actually start the dialogue in a more meaningful way.
Unfortunately, we do, we did under this, this.
Well, so, so it sounds like then, there's not the perception that the budget that the committee passed was highly irresponsible or.
That's not what I'm hearing.
Or padded beyond reason.
It sounds like.
It was this lack of clarity and.
Yeah.
And transparency historically that has been.
In the 12th hour, right? Because your E and D certification should be back in March.
Yeah.
I know.
And that's 1.3 million all of a sudden, and then it's like, now what do we do?
Yeah, and it was, and it was May when we were dealing with it.
And again, a lack of, for, and I completely understand the reason why there was no communication coming down, but as a town, we're on a deadline to set ours, and we ended up having to move our town meeting out a week, because the night before we're supposed to have our town meeting, we're on speakerphone waiting for you guys to make a vote.
Yeah.
Because you guys were voting on the budget at the same time that we were ready, we felt we were ready with the budget, and then all of a sudden it went out the window.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I do, I knew the timeline for the budget creation is different here than in the municipal districts or where I've been, but, but I think, like, after the stress that this year's budget process caused across all of the towns and school committees, I think that we should all commit to a, a really early start. And, like, I've had conversations with the person for the Department of Revenue who certifies our E and D, and said, look, I need to understand, Matt, what, what happened here and what the history is, and he's like, yep, it's, I was late, really late, and it's traditionally been late, and so I said, okay, Matt, look, I'm going to commit, like, we're going to, like, this created a real problem for the district and for towns. We can't do it again. We got to make sure that we are on top of that on time this year, and so we're going to try to get that done early, which is going to be a critical part of the decision-making for the budget creation. And I think that this collaborative budget process that I saw outlined, Deanna headed outlined in a really nice way in one of the school committee meetings I got to go to, I think we should get that started this summer with what that would look like, who should be involved in helping to just to inform what that process could look like that wouldn't involve too many people. I mean, one of the things about 36 people on school committee, that's a lot of meetings people have to go to.
It is.
But who, who would be the right level of people to make sure that the towns and the school committees have information that they need and that the communication channels are correct.
So does that timeline exist, or have, is there a, you have an ITO timeline?
Yeah, great question. No, there's not, the timeline doesn't exist, or else it would have, we wouldn't be here right now, right?
So that'd be a good place.
Because, because you wouldn't, you wouldn't have been, you wouldn't have been in the dark so much, right?
Right.
So I think, I think there's a good news about that, is that we get to define the timeline.
Well, and I think, too, we want to, you know, as we've been talking, too, about just having more regular meetings ourselves with our own finance committee, so it may be time, too, that we can, you know, whenever some of those get scheduled, that we can, you know, make it known, too, that, you know, it would be great to have you here, too, and sort of give us an update, what's going on? How's the budget going, or where, where are problems happening?
I wasn't joking about living policy, like, I mean, like, I, public policy is, is my career.
Great.
And I have, I love getting to talk to elected officials, because I, my, my first job was in the US Congress, and, and I just have tremendous admiration for anybody who's willing to put themselves through running for and holding elective office, so I admire what all of you are doing. I think it truly is public service. And so I would be very happy to come down and just figure out what the right level of communication is with, with you, Ed, as the town administrator, and with the committee. We should be able to take what has been a, sounds like, pretty opaque process. I also had some experiences recently where I had a pretty paper-based process, which always holds things back. Moved into the electronic age and have the communication channels established, and I think that it'll take me a little bit of time before I could suggest what the timeline is. I mean, I'm not officially actually started until July 1. But I'm here now, starting this week, like, three days a week for the rest of May, June. I need to have enough time with the team there to really understand the history. The timeline is different for the regional budget creation than it is for the municipal districts where I, I was. So it'll take me a little bit of time, but I would love to sit down with the right people over the summer and I'll talk to Deanna about having the conversations with the school committees about having them think through what would be the right way to lay out what the budget process is. And the fact that it was so raw for everybody, because all the community meetings I've gone to, they're like, yeah, that was rough. Means that everybody should, we should hit it right while it's fresh in everybody's mind.
Yeah, that's true. No, and I think, you know, we've, we've had good collaboration, we've had the, our, our sort of, not really quarterly, but we've had reports back from the various departments back to select board on a regular basis and and certainly the reports we've gotten from H M, Hampshire Regional have been, been great, just in terms of how the program is going and, and all the, all the improvements have been made up there. So we, we know that there's been monumental efforts made, so we'd like to be able to continue that, but probably get a little bit more into the finance that we, we were a little bit, we felt a little bit blindsided, I think, right? Right, as we thought we were okay with the budget.
You thought you were ready, and all of a sudden, out of left field.
So, yeah. So I think we can.
Yeah, and so, I mean, again, it, it, it's 12 million of a $19 million budget for us.
I know.
We, we can't wait for your budget, for the schools to be done in order to do ours, and certain decisions have to be made and we go along, and I, you know, I've heard time and time again, and sitting here on this side from somebody down on that side, it's like, well, we don't have it, so we put a placeholder in there, hopefully it works. And, and we, we all can collectively do better than that.
Sure.
And then we can regionalize and get 90% back on our transportation to start.
But I think the first commitment is, you know, more open dialogue, more regular dialogue. I think that's a great, great start going forward.
I think that we'll, we'll, we'll talk about what's the best immediate next steps. I know that I'd like to get direct understanding about the history of the Southampton pressures around the Norris budget versus the regional budget, and definitely a little bit about the, which I think we can do without being, I think, I, I think I can get that information without having to be part of the official school committee agenda. But certainly be happy to, you know, be part of the Southampton School Committee agenda too, so.
All right. Well, thanks.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody for showing up. That's very helpful. Thanks, everybody. Okay, let us move on. Jump to the town administrator's report. Ed, if you'd like to walk us through some of the things that are happening?
Just to let you know that the DEP public hearing for the acquisition of the 235 Palmer Meadow Road parcel for aquifer protection under the drinking water supply grant was held this morning at 10:00 AM in the DEP Springfield offices. Tim Godat and Joe Slattery from the Water Commissioners, along with myself and Bridgette Likely from Coastal Land Trust were in attendance. The hearing went well. The public has until May 30 to comment on the land acquisition. And the hearings officer will issue a letter to the town on June 7.
That's great.
Public Safety Building Committee did not receive a proposal from HKT until after their meeting was adjourned this Monday afternoon. The committee will take and discuss the proposal at their next meeting on Tuesday, May 30. It may be advantageous for the select board to name a new select board appointee to the committee before their next meeting on the 30th. Also, the committee has requested that Christina Madsen remain on the PSBC and request the select board to take no action on her resignation. I have completed the ascent form from the town, which was sent by the attorney for the court filing of the Parsons estate will in regards to the next step to see if the town has met the requirements to receive the funding from the will. I would like to thank Kevin and Jeremy Labrie and Matthew Poole of K and J Tree Service and their bucket truck, along with the help of Randall Kemp, as they took time this afternoon to install new ropes and rope snaps and the flag on the flagpole in the triangle across from the town hall. They wanted to make sure that a flag was flying there again in time for Memorial Day. The Memorial Day Parade will be taking place on Monday, May 29, starting at 9:00 AM from the William Norris Elementary School, with stops at Center Cemetery and in front of Town Hall. The design, along with the wetlands delineation and bridge and culvert assessment for the Greenway Rail Trail project is progressing. Randall Kemp went with the design consultant Ty and Bond this past week to view tree and brush clearing that will need to be done on the right away to fully complete the culvert and bridge assessment. The majority of the clearing will have to be contracted out in order to be able to get the drilling equipment required into the pertinent areas. Some of the clearing for a preliminary assessment may be able to be accomplished internally by the Highway Department. I would like to thank Lucy Dalton, our election workers, and the Board of Registriers for their work on the annual town meeting, May 9, 2023, and the annual town election, May 16, 2023. The COA Director Search Committee has a meeting scheduled on Thursday to go over the initial applications received for the COA Director position. It may be advantageous to also post for an interim temporary COA Director position to cover the basis in case a new director is not able to start before July 1. Upcoming select board meetings in June, to be determined. Community Conversation, Water Roads and Public Safety tomorrow night, Wednesday, May 24, 6:30 PM at William Norris Elementary School. And the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 29 at 9:00 AM.
Any questions? Yes.
If, if I could, under Item B, the Public Safety Building, I, I believe your intent is not to do committee assignments until the following meeting?
Correct, yeah. I wanted to give the, the new members especially an idea of what the various committees are. We don't go to every committee, but we do committee assignments, and there are several of them. And then some of you are actually already members of certain committees, and so that might make sense for you to be the natural liaison rather than have another person there. So I was probably not gonna do that until the next meeting, until we could really get a better handle on that.
But understanding the, the request here and probably the need to act on this, at least on an interim basis, and you being the most senior member of our committee, I would nominate you to temporarily take over as liaison to the Public Safety Building Committee until such time as we can formalize our assignments.
One second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on that?
Only you saying no.
No, I'll, I'll take it on. Sure. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And then I had a question about the, just if I could better understand under letter F. What's the funding source for contracting that out? Is that covered under the initial grant money we got, or is that coming out of a line item? I just, I don't remember.
That is coming out of a $300,000 Mass Trails grant.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And, and I believe, and now I'm gonna mess it up because I got so many numbers in my head, but I believe we've got an $80,000 or $100,000
Preservation as well.
community preservation match to go along with that, but that, that is where that is being currently paid for.
Majority is the first part of the design of, of the rail trail, yeah.
And we do have another application into Mass Trails for what I will call Phase Two of the design.
Gotcha. And then I don't, I think the answer is no, but is the town administrator looking for any action by us tonight on letter H?
I can speak to that. I, directly from the Chair of the Search Committee, they want to discuss it first on their meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
I'm just trying to give a heads up, but some of the advice I've probably passed along to them.
Right. So if you, if you guys end up discussing it at the meeting on Thursday, then we can probably pick it up if there is action to be done on the following select board meeting. Okay, that's fine. Good. All right, thanks for that. All right. Any select board reports? John, from your current committees?
We, PPP did meet. It's going to come up on the agenda later tonight. So I can, I can, we acted on everything that came before us. We continue to hold the third position of the Water Department in the folder pending the Collins review to come out. We opted not to reorganize at that meeting as there was one member absent, and we'll address that at our June meeting.
Okay. All right. And nothing else from school or anybody?
I think we got Hampshire Regional's update.
Taken care of. Okay. All right. Joy, anything from yours?
Sure. So I'll start with the Council of Aging Director Search Committee. Their next meeting is Thursday at 1:00 PM. The position had been posted on the town website, Facebook page, MCOA and MMA websites on Indeed, and placed an ad, online ad in the Gazette, which will be running on Monday. Those ads are funded through Estate Formula Grants. They did so far, I received a text actually on my way here, they have five applications so far. And so interviews will be scheduled in the next two weeks. Again, we'll have that discussion in regards to the interim director's position if we're having difficulties selecting a new director. Conservation Commission met May 15. They'll be, they're looking for a new conservation agent. I saw that the resignation was on, on the agenda for today, so I think we'll see a posting for that coming out. Their next meeting is June 5. Planning Board met May 17 over Zoom. Nothing really to report. June 7 is their next meeting in person. I did want to congratulate them on passing the new zoning bylaws at the town meeting. Open Space Committee met May 18. I was unable to attend. To my knowledge, nothing new to share at this time. And I'm unsure when the next meeting is scheduled for. And Housing Authority met April 26. Their next meeting is May 31 at Town Hall at 4:00 PM. They're still working on getting, we're still working on getting a statement of work out. And I think one of the members is going to be working on a draft. We do need to start getting applications out for parties interested in being on the Housing Trust.
Yeah, we've got an action item we have to pick up.
Yeah, so that's something that we have to pick up. And deciding maybe if we can at the next meeting or discussion about who on the select board wants to be on the Housing Trust as well. So that's something that I'd like to just keep. I want to keep the ball rolling on so we can start forming the Housing Trust.
Understood.
Um, yeah, and that's all.
All right, good. Okay, just one on the AdHOT Grant Committee. Will be meeting on Thursday, and the main application that we're gonna be picking up is from the Public Safety Building Committee. They've put together a draft narrative at least for the one-stop application, which would be going into helping, hopefully, fund some initial design work. This would be like in mid of, mid fiscal '24 if, if all went well, but there's a, it's a very lengthy application. It's about a 30-page application. I know the Chair has been working on it, and we'll see how far we've gotten, but the due date is, I think, June 1. So we'll see if we can help out and see if we can make the deadline on that, but it's one of those crazy ones that you enter in on, online, and it takes a while. So hopefully they've got it in pretty good shape, that the grant committee can do some final edits without having to do much real writing on it, but we'll pick that up on Thursday. Okay? All right, other than that, let's move on to appointments and resignations. We have two resignations. Would someone like to just bring those up?
Any objection taken with this package?
Nope.
Motion to accept the letter, the letter of resignations from Nicholas.
Pietrino.
Pietrino, Conservation Agent, and Vicky Lee Morrow from Finance Committee.
Okay, have a motion? Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? If not?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you, and thanks, everyone. And for Nicholas, I know you're moving on to new, new ventures with the National Park Service, I think, so best of luck.
South Dakota.
South Dakota. Oh, I didn't know that. All right, well, that's a big, little change from Southampton, but hey, they both begin with South, so, you know, I guess we'll, we'll take that. All right. Next, new business, audit engagement letter for FY '22. You have in your packages about a 10-page or so letter. Just so everybody remembers here, this was actually, this came out toward the end of March, I think, originally, and we had to wait on doing this because we didn't have enough money until we went through town meeting and passed the budget. We didn't have enough money in our coffers to handle this. So Ed, you want to just say a couple of points about this?
Sure. This engagement letter will cover the fiscal year '22 audit with Melanson. So we'll be able to get moving on that. They've actually started and reached out and asked for information from the town accountant, treasurer, collector, and myself, so they've actually begun the prop, the process. And I will just remind everybody that Melanson did become acquired, merged, whatever, by Markham. And actually, the Chair found it. I, I didn't. There is a clause that has changed because Markham's headquarters is in New York.
On page nine, it talks about, in the italics part.
If we ever did have an issue, which we haven't in the past, and ended up in court, we're gonna end, we would end up in a New York court, but I think that those chances are far and few between.
Yep. At first I thought they were talking about Southampton, New York. That's what drew my attention, and then, then it realized.
Well, my office gets, yeah, my office gets so many calls for Southampton, New York, instead of Southampton, Mass, that it would be unnatural.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 20, 20, 23 engagement letter from Melanson Heath to cost of $44,000 and authorize the Chair of the committee to sign it on our behalf.
Okay, have a motion? Could I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next. Select Board Current Liaison and Committee Appointments. And here we'll just, this is more for information tonight. As you've said in your packet, there's a, a listing of the various committees where we have current liaisons and also a meeting day as specific as we have been able to, to do that. Some committees have very set meeting days, others vary a little bit. And what I will do is just, I have a little bit of a handover note I know I got from Reenie, and I will see maybe if, you know, maybe all of us, it wouldn't hurt just to do that, so that if we just did a little, little paragraph about any current issues or just, you know, the, the highlights. So then we could let folks know what's going on, and then we'll try and pick that up on our, our first of June, our first June meeting, to actually go for those assignments.
Are we only doing that for ones that we think we're not gonna continue with?
No, I mean, most of these, these meeting, most of these assignments would, would continue. I mean, I think we would switch out some assignments. I mean, if somebody wants to stay with where they are, they would make that known at that point in time.
Yeah.
But given we've got, you know, some people that are, you know, switching around on committees and are on boards or elected anyway, we may have to make a few changes from what we are, but definitely we want to make space for, for Dan and for Stephen to, to fill in the gaps here and take on a few. The page on the bottom here, Dan, shows which, which ones are voting members. So there are certain committees where the select board liaison is actually a voting member, and that's Community Preservation, COA Building Feasibility Committees, Open Space, PQB, Public Safety Building, and Capital. So those are the ones where there's voting, voting membership, if I've got it there right, so.
Remember, feel free to haze me, give me the worst ones.
Well, you can, you can think about it. Well, what I'd like to do though, we'll try to get a little bit of a synopsis of, you know, just sort of the highlights, or what, you know, what's the I'm joking. the issue at hand for a lot of these committees, and then circulate them so that everybody's aware of that, so, you know.
And actually, Dan, you're not far off, because the standing rule would have been if we were doing, the board was doing these tonight, that the person that
Stephen might not have been happy, I don't know.
Gets all the nasty assignments.
Possibly. So we, we will pick those back up on the, the early June meeting, so that's just more for information in terms of which committees we currently are liaisons to, and we may decide, I mean, we, I don't know, we might decide that a committee or two doesn't need a liaison, for all I know. I mean, we, you know, we can take that up and have that for discussion next time around. Okay? All right, next. I think highway fees, policy, curb cut, and permit to work. I don't think there's any action on that. We've got something in our packet, and it's just the old fees, though.
I was hoping to actually sit down with Randall for half an hour to finalize that and get it done tonight, but
That's one of our last.
we've both been putting out different fires in different directions, so.
That's one of our last select board policies, old policies that we were updating, so these were existing fees that Randall was gonna double-check and possibly change. So again, we will hopefully get that ready for the next meeting. We'll bring that one back, but we do have a transfer station fee proposal here, and Ed, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Sure, as, you know, some of you are aware, we actually generated a deficit in retained earnings for the transfer station for the closeout, closeout from fiscal year '22. So that left us with a couple of options that DLS Department of Local Services gave us. We could, we could put it on the tax recap to raise it, or we could increase our fees, and, and because of the fact that also, you know, between fiscal year '22 of that fiscal year '23, and fiscal year '24, which originally the highway superintendent was going to use a small amount of retained earnings to balance that budget off. We had a conversation, and we feel that the best move forward to keep the transfer station enterprise fund viable and moving forward, because we still have to, no matter what, have to do the testing on the landfill that's been closed out, is to raise fees, so. The highway superintendent came up with a recommendation. You have in your package the current fees and the proposed fees, the only fees that are proposed to be changed that Randall brought forward were for fiscal year '24 were the bag fees, which would be going from $20 to $22.
So not to be a stickler, and I'm okay if the town administrator doesn't have this information at his fingertips, but I know there was a huge supply issue or demand issue with the bags, and I'm just, I've got, I've got to assume that there's been an increase in cost in the bags coming, and will this dollar increase? Because the 20, the 20-count is actually two packages, because they're 10 per bag, so that, that's just a dollar per package. This is more than, you feel comfortable, it's more than enough to cover the additional expense for the bags itself, and then to make up for the difference and. and have a little surplus? Or that was relayed to you from the Highway Department?
This was the Highway Superintendent's recommendation. I, you know, I might feel, just what I'm seeing for fiscal year '23, you know, most of the way through the year, I might question if this will be enough, or we'll be looking, or we will be looking for another in, small increase again for '25.
Yeah. So I'm kind of the opinion, and I'm happy to be the minority here, that I think the other change we should do here is the second item, transfer station sticker, non-commercial, non-business valid July through 20th, $75, that we should increase that to $80, by $5, and leave everything else the same.
I'll second that. But I would also like to talk about the bags themselves. If I go to other places to dispose of my garbage, I don't need a special bag that has a label on it. They look at the size of the bag and make the judgment as to the cost. So if it works for other companies or businesses that dispose of trash, why do we need special bags?
Could you tell me specifically one transfer station you've been to that's been the case?
East Hampton, the one on the way to North Hampton.
But it's not a municipal.
But that's not municipal. That's not a transfer station.
Yeah, but I get rid of my trash there.
This is how an enterprise fund works. So you have to get funds to cover the costs. You're either going to sell stickers to go on the bags which fall off, or sell the bags.
You want to get the money.
Otherwise, people are going to get bags from someplace else, and you're not going to get the revenues. Therefore, you're not going to have, be able to cover costs, and the transfer station's going to close, and you're not going to have it, and then you're not going to pay for the fees to do the testing of the landfill closure.
And I think they, for whatever had happened with the printing of the bags, we were getting them from New Hampshire or somewhere, because the Southampton.
We were, yeah.
Printing, something had happened with it at the company that does the municipal bags.
It was a supply-side issue. Couldn't get the bags to actually stamp them with our town.
That's part of our revenue generation. This is, the transfer station is supposed to be self-sufficient in its fees, basically. So this is what, how it works.
And I believe that we issued like 250 stickers. And even if I say 50 of those are seniors, there's no impact there. We're talking about the 200 at five. It's adding $1,000. And I just, you know, it's a check you write out once a year from 75 to 80. They sit on it for 60 to 75 days before it gets deposited, because we collect in June and wait till July to clear them. But other than that, it's a great program.
You're talking about the number two, the non-commercial, non-business? So.
Yeah, the one, a 65 and under resident would pay for their one-time sticker per year, from 75 to $80.
And 65 and over would stay the same at 50?
I would leave that at 50, personally.
Well, given that, I mean.
I just think, you know, if we're going to do this increase, we do it at once and see where it comes out. And I'd rather have an extra $1,000 sitting in that account, so maybe we can get internet down there and get cameras in at our only location that holds cash. But I know we got to get the money in the account first.
Do you have a sense whether Randall would be opposed to that idea at all? Or do you feel the need to?
He was trying to stay away from, shall we say, the permit cost or the sticker cost, whichever you want to do it, only because of the fact that due to COVID, we have had a significant number of.
Decrease, haven't we?
Decrease in the people that are purchasing the transfer station stickers and have gone to actually paying for their own private hauling, being picked up at their house.
Well, I mean, I could easily be convinced to go from $22 for the bags to $25. Now we're not dealing with $1 bills. The problem with that is, the 20 count, again, is two packages. So if you only get one package, you're paying $1,250. And now we bring it in quarters.
Well, do they actually sell them that way?
Yes. Yeah. You give them a $20 bill. You tell them, "Small or big?" If it's big, you get one pack. If it's small, you get two.
And since you're talking about that, I'm going to bring it up once again. A previous place that I have worked for a town, one of the auditors' comments, and it was for a number of years even before I got there, is why are you letting the transfer station handle cash?
It's an excellent question. That being said, some of our most honest employees work at the transfer station, and we are not inquiring, including anything.
No. All of these comments, even if they're coming from the auditor, auditors, are, shall we say, aren't directed at any current happenings or past happenings. They're proposed to prevent future issues that may or may never come along.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I fully understand the other charges. Like, I mean, I would question, is $15 enough to get rid of a couch, you know, right? Because we shouldn't be paying extra money to get rid of this stuff. But we don't want those fees to be so high, because then they up on the side of the road and not making down a transfer station.
Exactly.
So it's a break-even. You know, I was looking at the sticker. Maybe it could be the bags. But I just, ideally, if we adjust these rates, I don't want to be asked in a year to adjust the rates again.
Right. And if it was, if it was me, I'd probably agree with you, John, and say, if we're going to do this, and if we're going to make some, any alterations to it, let's just go higher on the bag fees.
So then, would you just want to go higher than 22 to an even number? $24 or $26?
He was suggesting 25. So.
Well, he said he wanted an even number because of how the change works out.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, you could do one number on, well, it'd be confusing. Yeah, better to have the same number for both.
You can do one of two things. You can either go to an even number, or you can make it a policy that you don't split those. They got to be sold and packaged into. But I would probably recommend going to an even number, which would be 24 or 26.
24.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we approve the proposed fees by adjusting each category 20-count bag and 10-count bag to $24.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Hearing none.
Right. Just to clarify, I'm assuming this will get posted and takes effect July 1st?
It's been posted already 10 days. Yeah, I would repost it for the $24 and bring it back at the next Select Board meeting and approve it, and would go into effect for July 1st.
For the new fiscal year. Okay. Okay. So be it.
So go buy your bags now. Stock up.
Yeah, buy them now. You've got a month's fire sale.
I didn't realize they were like forever stamps.
Okay. Let's see. Old Town Hall, exterior restoration work, bid award recommendations.
And I was originally hoping that we'd be able to do this tonight. I have gotten one reference back on the apparent low bidder, which was very good. I am still waiting for a second reference from a specific company that they have done, shall we say, historical carpentry restoration for. I have left two voicemails and an email with the curator of that nonprofit entity. So what I would probably say, I would say, not ready to move forward till I hear that. If the board wanted to make a motion somewhat to the effect that if that second reference were to come back positively, that they would give me the authority to put the contract together for the $81,500. And then, rather than having to wait for the next Select Board meeting, bringing that or contacting the Select Board members that it's ready to sign, and if we're at least able to get three signatures, which constitute a quorum, that would be the other way to proceed.
Bingo. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No, I think that would be good, because I think that would allow the contractor to get a head start, if we can possibly do that. So assuming all the reference checks come through, that would be a little bit of a time saver to do that. Very good. Next, energy proposals for Eversource submittal. And this is related to our green communities grant, Ed?
Yes. So Eversource has changed their policies a little bit. So the first.
Package, guys.
The first step before it goes to the green communities is we have to send it along to Eversource for them to actually authorize and tell us what the rebates or incentives are to be on these. So just to be safe, I didn't know if the Select Board wanted to authorize the Chair. That's why I printed them, to sign these four proposals, which are the ones, the same proposals that the Select Board a couple of meetings ago authorized to move forward on, or if the Select Board just wanted to authorize myself to be able to sign these and send them back so they could be submitted to Eversource.
So you said four. I have three.
We've got Town Hall, Police Department, Library, and there should be one for.
Should be one for Norris.
Norris in here somewhere. Yeah.
Now that's a got stapled or something.
Well, we might have missed it, but there are four. I know we voted on four. Yeah. It might not have made it into the package. I'm not sure.
I printed out four.
Oh, it's on, it's in this one.
It's on the backside.
It's in the Town Hall, stapled together. It says Norris School.
Oh, okay. All right.
I don't know what page that will be.
Yeah. Yeah. It's hard to, so, yeah. I mean, I, yeah.
No, John, I didn't try to sneak it out of here again. I know you think I did, but.
No. And just a reminder, so we've got these four proposals. This gets us to the full amount of the grant of the $138,500-ish or something like that. And then we've put a little bit of extra money in ARPA to cover the.
We had put a little bit of money, and I think it was like, I don't know, $4,000 or some change. However, I probably should have put it in my report. Joanna Douglas, our Director of the Library, has reported that she put an application into another source and has received a commitment letter from them for a grant for $10,000 to go towards the library lighting upgrades for inside and outside. So that's $10,000 less there. So unless the incentives change a lot, I think we'll be good without the ARPA funds.
Okay. Okay. Good. So she will be able to use part of that grant as well as the green communities? Okay. Sounds good. All right. Yeah. No, I think we ought to get this in as soon as we can. So.
So I'll make a motion, authorize the Town Administrator to review these, and assuming that they comply with our original votes, to authorize him to go ahead and sign off on our behalf.
And actually submit this to Eversource, right?
I'll actually, it'll go back to Derek at the company that provided these. They will submit them directly to Eversource on our behalf.
All right.
A second.
Yeah. Okay. We have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. And after that, do they, after Eversource does their thing, then is there a grant notification or something that comes back to us? Or?
Yes. We'll get notification of the actual incentives and rebates on them. And then once we have that, we'll send them along to D O E R.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Next, proposal for Fire EMS Department Review and Analysis. I believe this is the operational review scope of work that we have in our package. Now, John, I'll let you take the lead.
Yep. This goes along with the process we started in early this year when we were notified of the pending Fire Chief's retirement. And the Select Board took, is looking to take an opportunity to step back and assess this whole situation and determine what's the best course of action next to do. And in there, we discussed about having an outside independent third party come in and do an evaluation, top to bottom. And as you know, we have been speaking with Chief Russ Anderson, retired, who has a strong background. His resume was sent to us. I don't know if it's in the packet, but we can get the resume out later. He's got over 30 years, and he's highly respected within the state, specifically within turning around EMS services. He's done it in Granby and Southwick. And we have a proposal here with two options. The first one is the internal, the full review, top to bottom. What I like here is that it talks about, and I can't put my finger on it right at the moment, but he's, you know, he's going to meet with the Chief, talk with him. He's going to talk to the existing personnel and really do an in-depth process. He anticipates it to be a cumulative 100 hours. His rate is $50 per hour for five, no more than $5,000. This will include copies of his report to the Select Board and to the Town Administrator. In addition, he'll be available to assist us at a town meeting, if need be, in discussing this, depending on what the outcome comes to be, which is key. And then he further added an additional option, because of the Department of this size, operational mode is typically, and I'm reading from his proposal, first emergency, meaning the staff response to the emergency in front of them, EMS, if a medical call or fire response is needed. There are many similarities within the fire operation. So first task, he's just going to focus on EMS. Second is, let's focus on fire as well, and do both of them. As he reviews the information, there'd be a lot of duplication, reducing the cost. And he could expand this operational view into include the fire response in more detail, which could include a fleet replacement, capital forecast, fire call, force review, communications, et cetera, for another $2,500. So the total proposal would be $7,500. We allocated a placeholder in excess of that within the override, and the override passed. So the funding is there, provided that we're not invoiced before July 1st. But, yeah, the, so I'll pause if there's any questions before I make a motion.
Yeah. Any questions?
No.
So I'd make a motion that we move forward with both EMS and fire review for an anticipated total cost not to exceed $7,500, to be funded from the appropriate line item within the Fire Department budget, and that the Town Administrator be authorized to enter into an agreement forthwith, and ideally have this individual in place so that we can maximize face-to-face time with our current chief prior to his retirement, if possible.
Okay. A motion? Could I have a second?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
Was there a timeline for this?
Well, the money is available as of July 1, because it was in the override, right? So, but we do want to see if, I don't know, if there's any way to at least have them meet somehow. I don't know.
My understanding from when we met with him is he'd be available to start the work forthwith and probably would not invoice us until the final project was completed.
There we go. Can we put that in the motion? They can't charge us before.
No.
No. No.
It just has to be verbal.
They'll be part of the negotiations with the T A.
Yeah. I mean, just see what, what negotiations can we carry down?
It'd take about three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So he's available for, I'm sorry.
He was a week ago when I spoke to him.
Okay. All right.
And he anticipated if everyone's available and the data's available, that it'd probably be a three, three-and-a-half week process.
Okay. All right. So I think we have a motion and a second. Could I have, do we have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Very good. Thanks.
So that brings me to the Fire Chief Search Committee charge. And I think prior to that charge, because I don't think we have a draft in here. But I think, just given the avenue we're going down, I think the next step for us to do, while it's highly probable that we'll get this report prior to Chief Workman's retirement date, I think we should be, take precautionary steps and charge somebody with developing a draft interim acting Fire Chief job description to get it through the PPP process and get it posted now, so we can start that process. I do know there's at least one internal candidate who is looking to apply, and we have the external candidate who has extended an indication that he'd be willing to step in and help in a short-term period until we can get the permanent job description out there and move forward with that. So.
When would PQB be meeting again, sir?
We meet the third Thursday of June, but we could meet potentially ahead of time.
Different basis. Yeah.
And I'm just going to, through the Chair, directly ask John Lumbrue if he would be willing to work with me to put together the PRF and the interim job description.
Yep. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. All right. And so the idea would be to get that done before your PQB meeting, so that it could be acted upon at that point in time?
Yeah. If we had it ready, we could, I could call a, look for a special meeting of PQB.
Special meeting or something. Okay.
The, we'd have to figure, it's not a new position, so I'm not sure it would have to go to Finance, if it's an interim chief that doesn't take a place. The difficulty, I think, is I'm treating the month of, you know, it's a public communication. We received a public communication from our Fire Chief. Fire Chief that, for all the right reasons, he's exercising his rights to use his existing vacation time.
Right.
So, not to be penalized for it. But to me, during the month of June, when that's happening, it's no different than if he was going to stay employed and he was away. He has people in place to cover for him on vacations that I don't see the need to appoint an interim chief prior to July 1st.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because there's processes in place, and I think there was some early discussion that we might have an overlap.
Yeah.
But I personally don't see the need for that when there's an infrastructure already in place.
Yeah. Well, especially if we were going to go toward an interim candidate, I mean, an internal candidate as an option, too, that would alleviate the need maybe for any kind of real overlap, per se, but.
So, I guess that's my way of saying, we might call it interim chief, but it's really the Fire Chief's job, and therefore, I don't see that, I would argue it's not a new position, doesn't need to go through Finance.
And I would hedge our bets and call it an interim temporary.
Under the manual.
Only because of the PPP definitions, and I always get them backwards, is one is, means a, you hire a candidate from outside, and one is you've given it a temporary appointment to an employee that's inside, so.
So, assuming we can use the rulebook one way or the other, I think it's just PPP and Select Board that would need to sign off.
Okay. Well, let's, we didn't come back to, we'll come back shortly to our schedule for June meetings, but just to say, our June, first June meeting would be the 6th, though anywhere thereafter, probably. If P Q B could meet ahead of time, that might be good, but I think, well, I may as well just do it right now. Our June meetings would normally be June 6th and the 20th. So, if everybody's okay with those, we'll just put those on the calendar every two weeks. So, somewhere in between, if P Q B could figure out a time, once you and Ed have had a chance to develop that.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Do we need to take a vote on that at all, or what do we need to do?
I'm, no, I was just looking for a direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine at this point.
Make sure that at least the four of us are on the same page.
That we've got a, you know, a job description that we can work from, yeah, and put out a PRF.
It's gonna end up coming back to the Select Board anyway.
And I will just note, for those of you that were not at that meeting, one interesting fact that I found out when we met with Chief Anderson is that there is an archaic law on the books, on the Master General Law, which is why I was so quick to nominate Chair Fowles, that says that when a community fails to appoint a Fire Chief, the State Fire Marshal shall automatically appoint the most senior elected official. So, I have no desire to drive it around the Chief's car.
At least I get a hat.
But I am told there's heated seats.
And I win my fun bet with Chris because I told her, I goes, "You are not going to get challenged now that this is out there."
So, that's our internal candidate, Chief Fowles.
Yes, sir. All right. I don't think so. But anyway. All right. Good. So, we'll move on with that process, and hopefully, you know, in the first 10 days or thereabouts of June, maybe we can tidy that up and get, get that on, on the books and-
And then, as far as the charge goes, I still feel we need to wait for the report because that's going to drive what we want in the next chief.
Combination to of skills and so forth, perhaps.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else? If not, let's keep on moving. Community conversation, I just mentioned it already briefly in the beginning, so we will be having that tomorrow evening at Norris. Everyone's invited. We will have the Fire Chief, Police Chief's going to be there, our Highway Superintendent will be there, the Water Commissioners will be represented, and the Planning Board Chair will be there, as far as I know. And that will allow us to have some good question and answer. They're going to have a little bit of a, a little bit of a presentation in terms of just the brief overview, a couple of slides on a PowerPoint of their, their various departments, and then open things up for questions and just have a good discussion, I hope, about some of the challenges of living in a rural community and some of the expectations that people have, and, you know, what we can do to try and work together to solve some, some future problems here. Okay? So, everybody, please put that on your calendar and try to come. We're planning probably about an hour and a half. So, 6:30 to 8 is kind of the timeframe we're allocating at this point in time. But it can go longer if it needs to. We have the keys to the school, I think, so. All right. Other than that, any other business that can't wait until the next June 6th meeting?
Yes.
Was it one? Yeah, John?
So, I would like to start the ball rolling here, and if it's appropriate, how we do this, I don't know. But I would like us to make preparations now to issue an RFQ for a search firm to assist the town in replacing our irreplaceable Town Administrator. And if possible, have the RFQ ready to be issued July 1st.
Mm-hmm.
Just so we're not out in September, October. Give ourselves enough lead time on this.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, so for those who may not know, Ed has let us know that he's planning on retirement as the end of December, and so he will be with us through the next six months. And we will be looking as soon as we can to get that recruiting process going, so, yeah, that's something we'll have to get a-
So, we did already get, we reached out to the ones that are commonly on the Mass Careers pages, and we got some initial information back on who to send the RFQs to. I think we just need to go out and find some former searches and grab some templates and-
I can do that.
Put something together.
Put something together, yeah, and see how we can do that. Yeah, that would be good. Maybe we can act on that by, by the second meeting in, in June, if we possibly can. We can at least get-
Yeah, because again, it is, it's a July 1 budgeted item.
Right.
You know, get everything ready to roll right out July 1st and-
Because it may take, I mean, given our past history in terms of recruiting people, I mean, we know it takes a long time to find, find people that would want to come and take on a, take on a job, and so the sooner we can get out, out the deck on that, the better, probably. So, okay. Good. Old business. Ed, where are we with the voiceover IP here?
The work order for implementing the auto attendant has been sent in. I got confirmation of that today, so that'll be the last piece of the puzzle.
Okay. And everything should work smoothly-ish, hopefully? Hopefully, yeah, exactly. All right. Community cannabis benefit payment use, I think we'll still probably be waiting on Board of Health to get back to us on that in terms of their, their thinking on that.
Is that cannabis or opioid?
Well, it started out as cannabis because of the cannabis fund that we, we have in town from our, our one, one business, but then it kind of expanded to a much more regionalized kind of thing with, with opioid settlements because we're also getting that kind of money in, too. And that, we're waiting on until we hear from, from the state, apparently.
With John's comment, we probably should add a tickler under, whether it's, maybe under pending items of opioid settlement funds and-
Yeah.
Whether it's a special revenue account or-
Yeah, we need to put that back on the agendas, yeah. Probably under pending, yeah. So, we were-
I'm still in favor of a opioid stabilization account.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So, we wouldn't be mixing the two? Cannabis and opioid, and the opioids?
I'm sorry?
We wouldn't be mixing the two in the same account?
No.
No. Different funding sources.
There may be some of the same people. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's kind of a bigger issue, and I think the way it got started, there was a lot of energy and there was a lot of thought put in to the bigger issue of substance abuse and focusing on opioids, but we do have a responsibility to take a look at the money we get from our one cannabis business in town and kind of deal with that a little bit. I mean, it's hard to separate it, but we do need to acknowledge that that's a separate thing.
Thank you for adding more verbiosity to that for me, as a new guy.
I know. Feel free to ask questions, yeah. Okay. We do have a few signatures, some PCFs or PRFs, rather. John, you want to talk here?
So, the first two, I think we can take them up as a package.
Yeah.
Council on Aging, there's a PRF for the COA Program Coordinator and a PRF for the Council on Aging Administrative Assistant Council on Aging. There was some fogginess about what grades they were, so we went back to the records. We believe both of them were originally scored to be a grade four. We updated the forms on that. The, I don't have the origi, actually, they're in my pack, right, the originals? There was a question, we approved them pending approval from the Town Accountant because they were originally submitted with the account numbers for the grant, and it was just told us that they wanted to shift them over to the budget.
Yeah.
So, while the $12,845 that passed that town meeting matched the cumulative of the two numbers, we wanted to make sure that the Town Accountant agreed with that. And I suspect he did, if it's before us now. So, the other question that came up is the Administrative Assistant, which was originally four hours, was done away with in this last fiscal year to make room for the Program Coordinator. It is now thought that they can't do away with that position, and they need that person to come back in for four hours and assist. And now that the, they have the adequate funding in the budget, they'd like to move forward with that.
That's from the General Fund, and the, the Coordinator's going to be part General Fund and part Grant Fund?
Correct.
Yeah.
Depending on where they get hired on the pay scale based on experience.
Did you say that you believe these are grade four, both of them?
I wouldn't.
I wouldn't. The Admin Assistant isn't-
I would challenge, I would challenge that if-
I don't, let me look at my master list. What did I write down?
Program Coordinator, but-
Coordinator, I would think, would be higher than that, myself.
Well, actually, I thought the Program Coordinator, what it was graded, actually came in lower than that also.
Yeah. I did not have my computer that night. Let me look it up. Now that I shut it off.
Yeah, there's the thing here that's-
I mean, right now, the, the pay scale on the Coordinator is $17 to $20 an hour, and $15 to 17 on the Admin Assistant, so. And Bradley's signed off on these.
Oh, he'd be signing off that there's money in the budget, and in this case, they're being paid from a grant, so.
Only, only, no.
Only one of them is.
Partial. I mean, the-
Anything above and beyond would come to grants, yeah.
Yeah. Admin Assistant is, is out of the General Fund, apparently, but Program Coordinator's part, about two-thirds General Fund and one-third Grant, thereabouts. Something like that. So, do we have the ones that P Q B signed, or they, you did not sign off on them?
I put everything back in there.
Oh, you've got them. Okay. We just have the copies. Okay.
They would be in the signing package.
Got it. Okay. And those have been signed off on by Bradley? Both of them?
Yeah, that's initial.
Yeah. There. What else he's got over there?
Nothing he's signed.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, grade-wise, I mean, I think that's a-
Yeah, I just gotta find the right sheet.
Not positive?
They've been signed by PPPB, but not the Finance Committee yet.
Okay.
Is the Finance Committee able to sign this if they don't have a quorum?
They would have to appoint, the Select Board would have to appoint somebody so they have a quorum.
Council on Aging, sorry, Council on Aging Program Coordinator's a grade two.
Grade two.
And then the other one is... I don't see them on here. Oh, the Volunteer Coordinator is the other one, right?
No.
Program Coordinator and Volunteer Coordinator?
No, Administrative Assistant.
Administrative Assistant and Program Coordinator. Well, I mean, the grades, I'm not sure if the grades are terribly relevant at this point.
Well, if they're, if they're supposed to be a grade two, we can't classify them as a grade four.
I know, but we've got hourly rates here that were based on something that everybody's signed off on. Bradley's signed off on, too. Pay scale itself.
Do we know the grade ranges and can you just tell us?
Well, that's part of what we're working on with updating our classification.
I can go check the range for a grade two.
The grade two is 1571 to 2597.
Okay.
Okay.
Twenty.
Is that what's there?
Yeah, the Administrative Assistant is 15 to 17 per hour. And then the Program Coordinator is 17 to 20 an hour.
And you said that the Coordinator would be a three?
Yeah.
Yep.
Great, okay.
All right.
And the Admin would be the two?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So, could we make a motion then to, to go ahead and sign these pending, or not pending, but ahead of Finance? When will Finance meet again if they have to sign off?
Well, we can do it one of two ways. The Select Board can just approve it and move it on and bypass Finance's requirement, or we can sign it pending Finance approval, and then it'll sit there until Finance has a quorum.
It's the first option.
Do we first need to appoint somebody to Finance, such as yourself? I would like to point you back on liaison as Finance Committee.
Well, he doesn't get to vote. He doesn't come to the quorum.
But that helps with the quorum, but not the, not the voting, huh? Okay, so-
Does it help for quorum? It does not help for quorum.
No, it doesn't.
Does it?
Not as a liaison.
Nope.
Hmm. So, okay, what was your first motion then? What was your first thought?
Past Finance.
Oh, okay. Well, I think it's-
The way I, here's how I feel about this. These are not new positions. These are positions that previously exist, were previously staffed, are budgeted, and in it.
Right.
If it was a new position that was adding a new burden to the budget, then I absolutely believe it should go back to Finance.
Yeah. Okay.
But I don't believe that's the case here, and in fact, that's one of our proposals to change in the, in the manual, that if it's not a new position, we can bypass Finance.
Okay. All right.
So, I'll make a motion to approve them as-is and move them forward.
All right.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. All right. We'll sign off on those, and then we have a second one for Police.
So, that was the, that was the easy one.
Yeah.
So, now, we have, we have two items for the Police Department. One of them's on the agenda, and the other one, I guess I'll bring up as any other necessary business.
Okay.
But the first one, it's a PRF for a full-time police officer. This is, well, the Chief can talk about this one, and then we'll get into the, the other PRF.
Good evening.
Hi.
So, I, requesting this position, we had a, we have a full-time police officer that's in the military, and as of July 1st last year, he, I won't say deployed, but enlisted, if you will, in an assignment for the military for six months, he was due back in April, he then chose to do another three-year assignment. Consequently, with the three-year assignment, he, this is not a resignation, and through the military, he exercised his U S A R rights, which guarantees him his spot back, it's a three-year activation. That's a position that I'm requesting be replaced or filled during his absence. I see this as, I actually see this as somewhat, could be beneficial. As I spoke during the budget process, we, I wanted to try to start a soft approach towards less reliance on part-time officers and a greater reliance on full-time police, police officers, and because, as you know, and I've said this many times, in 2020, part-time officers worked over 4,000 shift hours, in this current year, it's about 2,000. A full-time position is about 2,080 hours a year for a police officer. So you can see where ultimately with the unintended consequences of police reform, I think that our reliance on part-time officers is going to fade out sooner or later through attrition, and a lot of these full-time officers, part-time officers that are being bridged over and becoming certified full-time police officers will get hired somewhere because there's a serious demand for police officers. So with that being said, I believe that this could support that soft approach of when Josh Lamb returns from the military in three years, we'll have a three-year period to adjust to an additional full-time police officer, and that's why I'm trying to look at this in a positive way.
And just so the board knows, this was actually my recommendation to Chief Illingsworth to move forward this way, and it's my recommendation to the Select Board, and part of that theory is three years is a long time not to fill a position, and also that's gonna bring us closer to some officers being able to retire, so I think it's gonna be seamless at that point in time.
Yeah, I don't think you could wait three years and have a vacant position.
It's just going to continue to create hardships that we've been dealing with for this entire year.
And this is separate from your request for.
This is separate from the.
That was approved in the override.
The override, correct.
So there'll be something else coming for that later.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right, so this is a.
P R F?
Yeah, yeah, P R F for a full-time officer, okay, pay scale 2499 to 2883. All right, so could we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? If not, could we have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Also, the other thing that the P P P Q Board took up was a P R F regarding a part-time dispatcher that was previously approved by both P P B and the Select Board in April, and the chief is specifically looking to adjust the upper end of the wage scale to attract a candidates that have, and their pay is commensurate with experience, and he has sought and received permission from the union to get our permission to raise the pay scale so that, i.e. a five-year veteran dispatcher comes in, they're not coming in at $16 an hour.
And we're just not getting any applicants, it's supposed to, for the probationary period for a part-time dispatcher and a full-time dispatcher for this fiscal year is 1641.
Yeah.
So this would be a request to modify the P R F, and we approved it subject to evidence that the union supported this.
Okay, and do we have that in our package?
I don't think so.
Oh, you have it, okay.
This is the other.
Okay.
Would you all bring that copy?
No, that's good, we'll share it. So it's the same, same P R F that we signed off on before?
Yeah, just modifying the upper range.
Yeah, okay.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, any further questions or discussion? All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and what would be the upper range on that?
The upper range, currently, right now, well, we'll say, let's just say, the beginning of fiscal year '24, the top step is 2244 an hour.
Okay, and we'd been at like 16-ish, is that what you're saying?
That's.
That's the, that's the probationary period, so, and that includes experienced dispatchers from other communities that may wanna work part-time, per diem, if you will.
Yeah.
And if it's 1641 an hour, we're just not getting any applicants, we had applicants, but as soon as we, when they try to discuss the wage, they automatically just say, no thanks.
But anybody coming in would be under a probationary period, no matter what their?
They would be under a probationary period, but not the pay rate of a probationary period, right?
Gotcha, yeah, okay.
Right, and just one question relative to the earlier conversation that the Board had, would Josh's, Josh Lamb's position that we're replacing, does that require it to go in front of the Finance Committee, or can I post that?
I would recommend that the vote be to post it.
Yeah, for my same, I would take the same position on the same thing, it's not a new position.
Yeah.
It's just your existing full, unique circumstances happening to play out here, but.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, wanna do a formal motion on it and just do that, or not, okay?
Yeah, I'll modify the motion where we previously approved it to make it clear that it can, the chief is free to move ahead with the posting.
Okay.
And recruit my process.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, that's the end of the P signatures, we're on licenses and permits in your package, we have a request for a one-day alcohol event for Eileen Hamel for Sunday, June 4th at Conant Park, I'm assuming we've got all the, all the documentation in order, Ed?
Yes, it is.
We have the Hold Harmless, we have all those famous things that everybody has to sign, and we have.
Park permission, rental permit.
All right, this is for a graduation party, and.
I'll make a motion to approve the request by Eileen Hamel to rent Conant Park with a wine and malt beverage-only license for a graduation party on Sunday, June 4th, between the hours of noon and 5:00 P M.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved, all right, very good, and we will sign off on that tonight, and then next, we have warrants, and I think I'll just play Francine and go through them unless you want to.
I was, I was gonna volunteer, too.
Go for it.
We probably should've made her come up, you know, show up just to do this.
Yeah, we should've made Francine your last one, I mean, yeah, I know.
Okay, warrants, P 2343, $313,533.88, it's a payroll warrant, P D 2343, $50,568.70, it's a payroll deduction warrant, P D 2343A, $167,880.53, it's a payroll deduction warrant with retirement, W 2344, $268,733.59, it's a vendor payable warrant, W 2344A, $1,027,575, this is a vendor payable warrant, it's for the Hampshire Regional Quarterly Assessment, and it does include the credit from the E and D. P 2345, $311,921.16, it's a payroll warrant, and then P D 2345, $49,946.33, that's a payroll deduction warrant.
Okay.
Just to clarify, it includes the credit, meaning we applied the credit and turned over a lesser amount, so we have an underspent line item versus waiting for a physical check to come back?
Correct, because when the original invoice came across, the mean town administrator would not let it be processed, and as it worked out, actually, they had the rework with the credit back to us within a day, so even though it was on a special warrant, it was processed the same and the same time as the regular warrant was.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I think we'll all remember this, but when we're looking at the revenue and expenses, well, why haven't we spent everything there?
Yeah, that's one, yeah, so that credit was our $317,000 or whatever?
341,000 some odd dollars.
It was part of our share of the E and D?
Correct.
The gap back, okay.
Correct.
Got it, okay, so it ended up being applied to fiscal '23 rather than fiscal '24?
Correct, so what it's gonna do is we're going to be, the two main categories of free cash calculations are underestimating revenue, or actually, overestimating, yeah, overestimating revenue and not spending all of the expense money, so this will show up as not spending all of the expense money, so theoretically, that $341,000 credit will go into the free cash calculation, and when it's certified in November or December, and come back to us through free cash, and at that point, while, no, it doesn't all go back into operational stabilization, it goes by the, by the formula, theoretically, a good portion of that will be available and to flow to operational stabilization, which we just asked Town Meeting and was approved to authorize $351,000 for the fiscal year '24 budget.
Okay, got it, all right, good, all right, moving on, no minutes to approve, we have just a few things on the pending items, but I think we've, we've talked about some of those tonight, I don't know that there's anything in particular, they're all gonna be on a kind of a tickler list.
Only the last, is there any target date?
On the compensation plan?
Yeah, well, we might see the, that.
Not yet, I'm due, I'm due to have a conversation with them next week, so probably have more information for the June 6th meeting.
Okay, we've already set our meetings, I think, for June 6th and.
20th?
20th, okay, and so I think that's it, so we will have an executive session tonight, so the reason for the executive session is per M G L Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares dispatch. Executive session pursuant to the provisions of M G L Chapter 30A, 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, executive session minutes, April 6th, April 11, and May 1st, 2023. The Select Board will adjourn to executive session and not return to open session, but could I have a motion, please, to go into executive session?
Could I ask a clarification question first?
Yes.
Because of the subject of number one, is the Chief Illingsworth gonna join us?
He will, I think.
So we should add that into the motion that he's being invited into the.
I'm sorry, okay, sure.
So I'll make a motion to approve both and invite Chief Illingsworth into executive sessions for the purposes of the dispatch piece.
Okay, and then a second?
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Lumbras, aye.
Piper, aye.
Lavalley, aye.
Fowles, aye, okay, and we are adjourned at 8 o'clock, and we'll take a couple-minute break and go into exec session, and we won't be coming back, so thanks very much.